Well, it's seven o'clock, so I'd like to call this meeting of Lakewood City Council for Monday, September 20th to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President.
President.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Now, would you please all rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation under Proclaimations and Presentations, Sound Transit Access Improvement Update with Ms. Katie Drohl, the Government and Community Relations Office, and Mr. Zachary Eskenazi from Sound Transit. I assume they're on virtually.
Mayor Anderson, they'll both be joining us virtually.
Hello, good evening. This is Katie Drohl, and I see Zach has just popped on, so that's great. I'm going to pull my screen up here and get us started. And to kick us off, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to provide you an update tonight. We have exciting progress on the planning for the Lakewood Access Project and are excited to share more with you for that. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, let's get started. So, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to speak this evening. As you just introduced us, my name is Katie Drohl. I'm the Government and Community Affairs Officer working in the South Sound, and I'm joined tonight by Zach Eskenazi, who is the High Capacity Transit Development Manager for Sounder South, and he's the project manager for the Access Project. I do want to just note, we were here in March and caveated our presentation by talking about the realignment process that the Sound Transit Board was in the midst of. The realignment process is now complete. The realignment resolution was passed in August, and the Lakewood Access Project that we're here talking about tonight was identified as a Tier One project, so facing minimal schedule delay and has a target delivery date of 2030. So with that, I will pass it right over to Zach to get into the details of the project. Okay, Zach, take it away.
Great, thank you, Katie, and thank you, Council and Mayor, for having us here this evening. Really appreciate it. So, I wanted to quickly go over the project. As a reminder, this is a project to improve access to the station for those who are walking, biking, rolling, driving, or taking transit. We expect that the Access Project will support the great work that the city's been doing on the Lakewood Station Subarea Plan. We've been working closely with city staff to evaluate potential access improvements to the station that were identified earlier this year, as Katie just spoke to. Potential improvements could include pedestrian bicycle infrastructure, bus and speed and reliability investments, expanded pickup and drop-off facilities, as well as parking improvements. And also, as Katie mentioned, there's a target delivery date for 2030, and the financial plan estimate for this project is $44 million, which is inclusive of planning, design, property acquisition, and construction. Next slide, please, Katie. So, a little bit about our evaluation process. So, we're currently in Phase One, Alternative Analysis, and through this process, we've been working on generating and evaluating improvements to increase access to the station. We are now at the point of the process where we're asking for feedback from the community, as well as the Council on potential improvements. We'll be doing fall outreach. More on that in a little bit on the presentation. And the types of feedback we're looking for is, is the community supportive of potential improvements that we have? And again, we'll get into that later in the presentation. We're also interested in understanding if there's any concerns from the community on the potential improvements. For example, on similar projects, we've heard things at this point in the project, like that proposed curb cut would actually be more beneficial over here or here, or that bike lane would be better on one street over as opposed to this street, types of feedback that we're looking for. We'll be back to the Council in November to report on what we heard and any changes to the list of potential improvements and possible alternates, and I'll cover that too later on as we go into next steps. Next slide, please, Katie. So, in the spring, we identified improvements, and then we took them, since the spring, we've been working to evaluate the improvements. We evaluated these improvements using criteria that were connected to our project goals, and I wanted to note here that equity is embedded in the majority of our evaluation criteria. So, in our analysis, we put a greater emphasis on the three access criteria to determine which improvements are the most promising. So, those three criteria are, would this improvement benefit underserved communities? Does it address a major barrier to access? And is it close to the station? We then sorted the potential improvements into three lists based on how they met our project goals. We sorted the potential improvements, and so those who are higher performing are what we're calling potential improvements. So, those are improvements that scored high on our evaluation criteria. We have middle performing, that scored okay. Those are what we're calling possible alternates, and then the lower performing ones, we're not proposing for further consideration. And so then we grouped those individual higher performing ideas into bigger groups of potential improvements based on location and what types of needs they address. We did the same coordination with City of Lakewood and Pierce Transit, as well as Washita. Next slide, please, Katie. We also did the earlier outreach in the spring, where we solicited community feedback on what improvements we should evaluate. We had over 50 survey responses to that online open house, where we heard priorities such as station access and safety, parking, pedestrian infrastructure and experience, as well as bicycle infrastructure and safety, such as bike lanes to and from Lakewood Town Center, or safer pedestrian connections from Springburg, are examples of things we've heard in our earlier outreach. Next slide, please, Katie. So, as I've described, we evaluated improvements, and those that were higher performing, those that scored well in our three criteria are listed here as potential improvements. So, I will quickly go through these for your benefit. I think you have 112 Streets Southwest Connections. Those are sidewalks, curb gutters on 112 from Bridgeport to Gravelly Lake Drive. We have Route 206 bus connection to the station. That's making improvements on Pacific Highway South, so that Pierce Transit Route 206 can access the station and drop passengers off there. We have Kendrick Street Southwest Connections. That's curb better sidewalks on Kendrick from, I believe, 108 to 111th Street. We have stationary improvements. Those are things such as a public address system, additional tactile pavers, additional wayfinding to help folks with disabilities, or with language barriers at the station, additional shelters at the station. In Springburg area, we have the 47th Avenue Southwest Bridge and Sidewalk Connections, so those are improvements on the sidewalks to the station area from 47th, as well as improvements on the Route 206 in the Springburg area, updating the bus shelters, as well as adding sidewalks where there are not sidewalks on that route. Those are down there, New York Avenue, McCord Drive, that kind of, what is that colored? Yellow, I guess, for lack of a better description, that shows those improvements. All of this will be available on our website for our online open house, so there's ample opportunity for the Council to dive deeper into what these are, and I'm happy to answer questions at the end as well, but do want to be mindful of your time. So, I'd ask Katie then to go on to the next slide. And in this slide, we list our possible alternates. So, these are improvements that didn't score as high as those potential improvements, but that still shows some promise, and we do want to hear input from the community on these improvements as well. And I won't go into too much detail on these. Again, they're available as well on our online open house. Which brings us to our next slide. So, our round two of community engagement starts on October 6th. Well, actually, it starts tonight with this presentation to you all, but then, starting on October 6th, our online open house will go live. The website provided here will also be advertising that in a lot of different locations. It's going to be translated into Spanish, Tagalog, and Vietnamese, in-person drop-in session at the station on Thursday, October 14th, as well as a virtual Q and A on Wednesday, the 20th. And again, our goal is to gather feedback on potential improvements. Other tactics include mailers, tailored door hangers, so we're going to be reaching out to neighbors who are directly adjacent to some of these improvements, again, social media, email list, signage posters, and meeting more with stakeholder groups. So, a lot of activity going on between now and the end of October to gather feedback on these potential improvements. Excellent, please, Katie. So, in terms of next steps, so we'll be doing our community engagement, and then in November, I mentioned, we'll be coming back to the Council to report on what we heard, as well as working to identify the preferred alternative, preferred improvements for consideration by the ST Board. So, what that means is, the Sound Transit Board is going to decide which set of improvements to further study. So, we'll take into Phase Two, which is conceptual engineering and environmental. That is targeted to begin early next year, at the conclusion of this phase of the project. So, that's in winter of 2022, the Board selects improvements for further study, and during this time, we'll continue our technical advisory group meetings, of which city staff is a member, to continue refining and making sure that we have the right list of improvements to take into further And that concludes my presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Council. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Eskenazi, earlier in your presentation, you had a slide that was talking about the criteria priorities, and there was a comment on that about items that wouldn't be considered, and it said, "Not prioritized by the local agency, Pierce Transit or South Transit." How does that process, that prioritization decision, work? And do you have some examples of projects that fell off because of they weren't prioritized by, and I interpreted that to mean that they had to be prioritized by both, or is it one or the other?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it was an iterative process that we did, and I think an example I can provide is an idea that was presented to us to reroute Route 206 in the Springburg area, so that it ran on the same street currently it's running on McCord and on Lincoln. So, we went with Pierce Transit and learned that Pierce Transit had done a lot of work to basically structure the route as it was. They did a lot of outreach. There was a lot of things that went into that. So, the preference from Pierce Transit was that we keep the route as it is, but that just provide the sidewalk and the stop improvements. So, that's not necessarily a project that maybe fell off the list, but it is a project that was refined based on a priority.
Okay. The projects you briefed us on, have they all been vetted through that process of being prioritized by one or both agencies?
Correct, yes. Pierce Transit's very supportive, for example, of the Route 206 improvements, as well as the improvements on Highway 99, and then city staff has indicated that the potential improvements that are identified here are a priority for them. For example, the 112 Street Southwest, that's going to, from Bridgeport to Gravelly Lake, will build off a current city project from 111th to Bridgeport. So, that's, for example, a priority from the city staff that we, that through the process was identified as a promising alternative, or, excuse me, promising improvement.
Okay, and I was glad to note that on the upcoming public outreach items, that we're going to have translation capabilities during the virtual Q and A, but will there be some translation capabilities at the, I guess it's described as an open house at the station the week prior?
That's a good question, and I will look into that. I think we should be able to get interpretation of that as well.
And leading into those two events, what information's going to be available to the public so they can come prepared to comment?
Yeah, good question. So, the way that our online open house is structured is, there will be an interactive map, much like the one you saw for the potential improvements, and you'll be able to click on a particular, there'll be a line that will be color coded. You can click on that, and it'll let you know what the name of that is. Then, directly below, there's a section which will describe the project. So, for example, the stationary improvements, you click on the map, it says stationary improvements. Just scroll down to the one that's color coded, labeled stationary improvements, click on that, and it will expand and describe for you what's proposed.
And how similar is the project with Lakewood Station to what's going on at other key points in Sound Transit, like Kewalup or Kent or wherever, or has this project got some uniqueness?
That's a good question. So, these projects are, we're additionally doing a South Tacoma Access Improvement Project as well. It's on the same timeline as this project, and those are both ST2 projects, similar to the Sumner, Kewalup, Kent, and Auburn projects. So, those are all similar projects. For these two projects, the Lakewood and South Tacoma Projects, there's a desire, more of a desire to focus on the non-motorized improvements and less emphasis on the parking. Those other four projects, the community felt that parking was more, to be more emphasized, and so that's kind of where those ended up. But with these ones, there's more of a desire to focus on the non-motorized improvements. That's why you see under the possible alternates, a surface lot. So, to kind of address that parking need, we proposed a surface lot. We looked at structured parking, but that's an example of something that fell off in that its affordability was too great. So, that's kind of the similarity with these projects. They're primarily access improvement projects to the Sounder stations.
Well, I thank you for your presentation today and look forward to the post-input presentation in November.
Yeah, great. Thank you for your question.
Mr. Whalen.
Well, thank you both for coming tonight. We appreciate the update. My question is on the estimated budget and project scoping. So, as you go through the process and determine from the public input and go through the scoping process as to which projects will be, you know, rank ordered, how do you go about allocating, you know, with the available funds? Is it just kind of, you know, top project down to as much as you can do for the, what, $44 million that's available? Or how does that process reach some sort of fruition?
Yeah, it's a good question. So, right now, what we're trying to do is trying to come up with a list of good projects and finding that right balance, so that we don't accidentally kind of advance more projects or more improvements than we can afford. But then again, we don't want to be too conservative, because then we don't want to be in a situation where we don't have enough improvements. So, it's a little bit of a balancing act that we're doing. But as we go into further phases of planning, we'll get more refined cost estimates and get more of an understanding of delivery methods and how we're going to bring these improvements about. And then, hopefully, we've hit the right amount. If we're over, then we'll have to have conversations with the city about what tweaks may need to make for the improvements. If we're under, then we may have to go back and look at, you know, what of these possible alternates can we bring forward? So, it's through the next phase, we're going to have to have more dialogue, more conversations, work more, continue our close collaboration with city staff to make sure we're hitting the right amount of improvements and making the right adjustments.
Thank you. Any other questions from Council? Well, thank you again for joining us tonight and the updates. We look forward to progress.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now move to public comment. This is when any member of the audience may comment on items related to matters related to city business under the public comments period. Comments are limited to three minutes. When you approach the podium, please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Paul Volkey, Lakewood, Washington. Yellow light comes on at 30-second warning. The red light comes on when your time is up. Virtual comments will be accepted. The Zoom, as an attendee, may call 1-253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID 868-7263-2373, or visit zoom.us and enter the meeting ID 868-7263-2373, the numbers which are on your screen if you're following us online. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or other chosen identifier. Use the raise hand feature to be called upon. When you are unmuted, please provide your name, city of residence, meet speaker. We'll also be allowed three minutes to speak. Outside of the public comment, those of you on Zoom will continue to have the ability in the app to raise your hand for the duration of the meeting, although you will not be called upon after you've had your opportunity to First person to, we'll do the folks who are here first. The first person who signed up to speak is Glenn Speeth.
Glenn Speeth, Lakewood, can you hear me?
Not very well. We'll take a liberties, and you can take your mask off to speak. It's a little hard at the podium.
Can or can't?
Can, please.
Okay. I'm going to start with my punchline, that there is relics all over Lakewood that are recoverable, and I've done it. Ford School, Fort Silicon Park. One thing that I have never shown yet that needs to go in the museum, can you guess what that is? That's a horseshoe that came from Motor Avenue underneath the pavement. I had asked the contractors out there to look for relics, that's their area, and they put this at the entrance of the museum for me. I know where there's a lot of existing relics, but the state has told me I can't do any of that, because I don't have the authority, even on private property. They're saying the state owns all the relics. A good example of that is Mike Avi collected 62 boxes of relics from around the Lakewood area, Fort Silicon, Indian relics, all kinds of things. 62 boxes. John Simpson tracked that down for me and found out that the college, Pierce College, because Mike Avi was a professor there, after he died, the college wanted to give it away. I was contacted, but we didn't have a museum at that time, so there was no way we could accept it. Anyway, it went to the Burke Museum. I tried years ago to try and get some items back. They would do that, but they'd have a loan situation that was $100 per item. Can you imagine how many items there are in 62 boxes? It could be cannonballs, arrowheads, spear points, Indian artifacts, all kinds of things, and I'm going to run out of time. I know that. I guess I'll have to talk about this in the next six or seven meetings, council meetings. I would like to see a way where you could authorize, let's say, the Landmark Commission or the Landmarks Board to have a committee or a city committee to recover artifacts and try and get them displayed locally.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Tamara Cook.
Hi, I'm Tamara Cook. I'm from Lakewood, Washington, and I have three issues here that I want to talk about, and they're very important to me. I do ride the bus every day. I live within my means. I drive my, I take my bike everywhere. I'm on disability, and I have multiple sclerosis. I've also had a craniotomy, and I just want to let you know how difficult the system is for me to navigate. I'm in remission right now, but these are the three issues I think need most concentration in our area. I want to see a secure telephone system, one that restores our privacy rights from surveillance capitalists. I have a very difficult time keeping a secure system and keeping my telephones secure. I'm constantly hijacked, cable TV, my accounts, everything. The other one is, I want to see the city council include people that decide not to check the little box on their device that says all this stuff they don't understand. I took corporate media back in the 1990s. My background is in Hanford Nuclear Reservation. I worked in chemistry. I also worked for WSU in serology and virology. I worked for nuclear power plants back east. We started in DOS. This system we have right now, it's not fair. It's not right. I brought some little, some little things for you to look at. Did you read your, here, everybody, did you read, did you check that little box and did you read it? And most of the time, do you understand it? I had to take a year off of my life to learn networking. I'm on disability. I can do that. I can learn networking. I had to learn about small devices. I don't want to know about that. That's not what I'm interested in my retirement years or when I'm feeling good. I guess I'll have to make a lot of time for this. The other thing, the last thing is, I want the city council to go back to the 1990s way of doing business licensing. Businesses here are not accountable. They don't put their license numbers on the doors. When I took corporate media, every license number had to have a, every license number had to have, every webpage had to have a license number. None of them do. Businesses don't.
Thank you. Next person who signed up is Helen Wagner. Next person who signed up is Helen Wagner.
Ma'am, is that your glasses case? Glasses case?
No, no, oh, okay. Is, yeah, okay, it's working. I am Helen Wagner. I live in Lakewood. I want to speak about the Oaks tonight. It would appear that the Oaks debate involves the old dichotomy of progress versus status quo. People who are alarmed about the deterioration of the environment continue to offer specific solutions for saving precious and irreplaceable trees. Indeed, natural areas in general. It continues to boil down to the idea that Lakewood needs to prepare for huge influx of potential residents and to offer contingent services for them. It appears that the only way to quote, grow unquote, is to get bigger. Is growing in size even a desirable goal? Should we not be striving to improve what we have rather than simply getting bigger and more commercial? I return to the beautiful symbol of the oak in front of great cuisine that has a brick enclosure at the base. One has to turn the car in order to get into the parking spot. The tree seems to be telling us that we need to slow down in order to avoid a crash. The more we disregard natural things that should be preserved, the more contentious our relationship with nature becomes. Recently, I received in the mail a pamphlet that outlines the virtues of Lakewood. So much of that publication cannot be disputed. However, how can we be portraying the city as an instrument of change in the global warming problem and protector of our trees? The pamphlet says that we are working against global warming and protecting our canopy. Of course, slowing warming and preserving trees are interconnected. We still are putting building ahead of preservation. We're not really protecting trees when we are allowing private owners to cut down specimens that are specifically protected, then giving cutting permits after the fact. The pamphlet says that the city is enforcing the laws about cutting. Why should it be permissible to cut trees on a lot just because it is small? That notion encourages denser spacing of houses. Not a good way to keep the character of Lakewood as a good place to live. We are not, not trying, are we not trying too hard to be urban and mainstream? It seems as though the rest of the world is trying for the same thing, and look where it has got us. Please consider the preservation of our natural world as more important than adding to the manmade. Thank you for your consideration.
Next, next person to speak is James Dunlop.
My name is James Dunlop and I am a Lakewood resident. I want to comment on how Lakewood City Council is organized. As Ado Akwatas keeps telling you, the city council, you are working for us. He is expressing the aspiration that power should flow from the bottom of a pyramid to the top, not the other way around. In other words, power to the people. In Lakewood, the mayor is at the apex of the elected structure. He is not directly elected and is instead chosen by his fellow council members. This is an important point. Particularly as in the last couple of weeks, a lot of people have been wondering how to remove him from office. It is not easy unless he commits a felony or misses three council meetings in a row unexcused. One possible change to the way the mayor is elected was suggested nearly twenty years ago in two thousand and three. Council position one should always be the mayor. I recommend this because it creates a direct link between the office of the mayor and Lakewood's electorate. Also, the city council needs to have a connection with the different areas of Lakewood. We should have a council composed of a mayor for position one and six council members for six districts of the city. Positions two to seven will be tied to these districts with candidates needing to have their primary residence in the district they seek, they seek to represent. This way, you wouldn't have the absurd situation where the last council meeting on September the seventh, the deputy mayor, when asking about the Montevista area of the city, admitted, I've never heard of Montevista before, but northeast Lakewood, that makes sense to me. I'm not criticizing Councilmember Wayland. His lack of knowledge of Montevista as deputy mayor is a result of the existing system. But imagine how you would feel if you were a resident of Montevista and you knew your deputy mayor hadn't heard of you. Apparently, over five thousand five hundred people live there, which is over nine percent of the city's population. That's like Kamala Harris having not heard of Texas. Anyway, I think we ought to agree that something must change.
Next is Amelia Escobedo. Amelia Escobedo. Will be followed by Christopher Escobedo.
Hello, my name is Amelia Escobedo and I live in Lakewood. First, I would like to say that I hope that we can get you off as mayor. And one thing that I want you to know is racism should not be allowed in Lakewood. I saw how you tried to have the twenty-fifth anniversary on the eighteenth. What was critical about the eighteenth? It was the day that they were supposed to, the Trump supporters are supposed to get together and show their force as white supremacists. Hate is not welcome in Lakewood. Racism is hate. And if you are a man of faith, then you should know it is wrong to hate. I'm here because I am appalled at your actions towards Melissa Knott. She is an amazing grandmother. I wish I had a grandmother that showed me how to stand up and rise like that and show me how to speak my mind. It is appalling to me that you're still sitting there and I hope that the city council members get together and force you out. Why? Why do you allow this hate to fill your heart? I need you to change. I am, I am so glad that your daughter chose to choose equity for our school board, for our school system. I'm glad she voted for that. And I hope that she is better than you are. Why are you still allowed to sit in that seat? I don't understand why it's allowed. You told children that they couldn't speak and that they're incompetent. Why? And then you don't even make the land, this land, a priority. They keep telling you to save the trees. They keep telling you to do something about it, but you're not doing anything. You can make it a priority to save Lakewood. The beautiful trees, everything that's here, we breathe. Our children are going to have this in their futures. And I hope that you, as a Lakewood city council member, stand up and force him out so we don't have to. And if you don't force them out, then we're going to force you out. We need change now. Thank you.
Christopher Escobedo.
Good evening, council members. I guess today I'll just give you like, I guess, a little report card in on each one of you. Mary Moss, I never hear you speak, you know what I'm saying? I hope you do more than we see. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rate you very high. Mike Branstad, you're like my hero, brother. You're always asking the right questions. You're always involved. You're always calling the, you know, a spade a spade over here, and I thank you for that. Ms. Bell, I voted for you, so I hope you get behind us, just like we're going to get behind you. I can't say nothing about the mayor, you know, everybody knows what he did and what he represents, and we hope we can get him out as soon as possible, according to you. Jason Wayland, thank you for, you know, acknowledging me and at least trying to take some steps forward. You know, you, you do, uh, you go a little bit sideways, you know, by not accepting that the parks are not good enough. And it's when it's hot, you can't slide down, and when it's raining, nobody's going to go to the park. So we need roofs on top of all the parks. If you've never seen it, you can go on base. They got roofs on parks over there. It's amazing. It's a cool thing. And then, uh, y'all got to put bathrooms on these parks. The heck's wrong with y'all trying to put hand washing stations? You know, have some respect for human decency. You know, everybody needs restrooms. You know how many elders we have in this place that have urinary incontinence? And they would love to pull over and use a bathroom if there was one. You have to think about everybody, children, older folks, everybody. And my main point today is that you need to stop the gentrification of Lakewood. Gentrification is the process whereby the character of a poor urban area is changed by wealthier people moving in, improving housing, and attracting new businesses, typically displacing current inhabitants in the process. A process of neighborhood change that includes economic change in historically disinvested neighborhoods by means of real estate investment and new higher income residents moving in, as well as a demographic change. These are families we're talking about. These are children that you're displacing, each one of you, children. You will be held responsible in this life and the next. The only solution I see is a rent freeze where the rent cannot be raised until a ten-year freezes up, something like that. But Jesus said, whoever shall offend the little ones which believe in me, it will be better for him that a millstone will hang around his neck and he would drown in the depths of the sea. Woe to the world because of offenses, for offenses must happen. But woe to that man who causes the offenses. Thank you.
And next up is Ado Equitas.
My name is Ado Equitas. I'm the chairman of the White Panther Party. Come here, do me a favor, put your hands up. There's a funny thing in movies. Every time a disaster is about to happen, a scientist come in and says that a disaster is about to happen and everybody laughs him out of the room. So we're going to do some science today and we'll see what's what. So, talking about the trees. You had coffee recently, and one of the things that you said, this isn't verbatim, was if we want to save the trees, the public should save their money, go out and buy that land so that the city can't cut the trees down. Once again, I know that's not verbatim.
Yeah, it isn't even close.
But the spirit of go buy your own land, protect it. We did. It's called taxes. So I'm gonna leave that one alone. I'm gonna move on, because guess what? I found the kid's name and I found the cop's name. It all got released, the stuff that we were talking about last time. The kid that was going through a mental health crisis. His name was Spencer Claiborne. Yes, he had a gun. Not when he was shot. They killed him. The woman that called the police wishes that she hadn't because he didn't deserve to die. Guess what? That cop, not the first person he's killed. Two thousand nineteen, he killed Keith Harvey with two other officers. Keith Harvey had posted that he was going to go commit suicide by cop. He had posted what was going to happen. Put the knife down. No, okay, bang. That's two cops now, and the list just keeps getting longer and longer. They're killing people and you do nothing. Said Joaquin had his hands up. I'm about to run out of time. It's been about two and a half minutes. How do your arms feel? He was there for four minutes before he got shot. Your arms get tired. Did his arms drop? Maybe? When a gun is on the floor, you have to bend down. He was shot through his arm into his chest. You can't do that if you're reaching for a gun. He was murdered. All power to the people.
Next is Oviyung, Obunayo X.
Obunayo X, Black Panther Party. I'm going to start with, uh, the young man's name, as he said. Spencer Allen Claiborne, twenty-five, had a mental health breakdown. And the police, of course, responded in their ways that they do. I'm going to get into some definitions here and tell you why I'm using them. Terrorist. Terrorism is defined in the code of the federal regulations as the unlawful use of force and violence against persons or property to intimidate or coerce a government, the civilian population, or any segment thereof. Sounds about like the police. Hypocrisy. The practice of claiming to have moral standards or beliefs to which one's own behavior does not conform. Pretense. Sounds a little bit more like these chambers. Idiocracy. A society or group that is controlled by or consists of people of low intelligence. Where's he in looking? Leads me to lackey. A servant, especially a liveried footman or manservant. I'm just going to say, y'all weren't wrong when you used that word last time. Goon. A violent, aggressive person who is hired to intimidate or harm people. Y'all gonna have to pardon me. I'm a little bit of a wordsmith because she didn't know I was college trained. My lexicon is a little bit expanded beyond that of which y'all would expect of me. Competent. That's our children, by the way, competent. But the definition is having the necessary ability, knowledge, or skill to do something successfully. So in saying that our children are incompetent, you are saying they are unable, unknowledgeable, and unskilled to do something successfully. Continuing forward, only got forty-five seconds. Let's keep it going. Oppression. Prolonged, cruel, or unjust treatment or control. The police. Gangster. A member of a gang of violent criminals. Police. Thug. A violent person, especially a criminal. Police. Above the law, not required to adhere to current laws, rules, or standards. Police. Oh, mayor too. Wiley. Mike Wiley. Skilled at gaining an advantage especially, especially deceitfully. Sounds about right. Don. How you doing? A pardon me. A high-ranking member of the mafia. How you doing? With that.
Yes, you are.
Said Joaquin.
Fancy Carter.
All power to the people.
Y'all hear me? Y'all good? Y'all can hear me, right? Okay. Time to run it? Now, I know y'all don't ask the questions when we ask y'all, so I'm gonna ask y'all the questions. If you happen to see me out in public talking to somebody through their car window, and I ask them to do something very specific. But in the course of regular human nature, much like Ado and our comrade just showed, they're unable to comply with that thing that I asked them to do, you know, completely. They're not putting me in danger. They just can't completely comply with what I'm asking them to do. And you see me lose my mind and start shooting. What would you think of me? Would you think I'm a killer? Would you think that I'm an unjust, unthinking, unfeeling individual? Is that what you think? Because that's what I think. I'd probably look at myself in the mirror and say, boy, you are crazy. I'd probably look at myself in the mirror and say, boy, you are crazy. The only real question I have for y'all is, how is it that you can empower people who don't care about the people that their task were protecting? See, every time you see me, it's gonna be about them. I care about trees, don't get me wrong. I care about rezoning the city and moving things around and all of that, cool. But I'm the minister of defense of the Black Panther Party and my primary responsibility is the safety of the community. God forbid, I wish we had been the Black Panther Party last year in May. Maybe I could have helped Said Joaquin still be here, maybe. Every time I have to talk to his mother on the phone, I'm like, I'm trying. I'm doing everything I can, we're doing everything we can. And to know that on her end, all the way across the country, she feels like there's little to no hope for justice. Now, trust me when I tell you, when in any situation where there is a justifiable murder that takes place, I will be the first one to say, hey, I'm not getting ready to go march for that, he asked for it. I understand that life happens. Trust me when I tell you, we've been in situations where life almost happened to somebody else and I was gonna have to be the one responsible for that, to protect my party and to protect the community. But that is the only time that I would ever do this. It's not something I'm trying to do. The real purpose of the Black Panther Party is to not let that be the situation. I thought the purpose of the police was to protect and serve, not to patrol and control, that's all that's happening. You know what, when I see the police riding in my neighborhood, I get nervous, you know why? Because they don't live there. So it's almost like a foreign army occupying the territory where I call home, that I can't call home because it doesn't feel like home. Real people don't live under threat at home unless your name Brianna Taylor. All power to the people.
We'll now move to the prospective commentators online. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online with their hand raised?
Mayor Anderson, the first person with their hand raised is Christina Minetti.
Right, Christina Minetti, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank heavens. Hello, my name's Christina Minetti, I've lived in Lakewood for half a century and I'm concerned that we may be facing some elements in City Hall who might fundamentally not care less about Lakewood's trees or environment, no matter what the city's mission statement says. I wanted to draw your attention today to some deeply disturbing comments Mayor Anderson made to me during coffee with the mayor meeting last Tuesday, September 14th. Ms. Newton had made a presentation about the various development proposals around town and I pointed out during the questions and answers that all of them, I believe, involved Gary Oaks and that I hope that they would be suitably protected and preserved. The mayor told me pointedly that environmental concerns are often in conflict with development and that the environmental concerns don't always win out, these are almost his exact words or exact words, he went on. "I'm a firm believer in private individuals saving up money and buying up properties for conservation purposes." He, shocking, the mayor truly believes that if one wants to have trees in Lakewood, the people who want the trees are the ones who have to buy them all up? Has the mayor bought any extra parcels to this end yet? Let's think about this. Developers have millions of dollars, they can buy the nine acres on 123rd Street where there are 114 Gary Oaks. How many of us have that kind of money? Some people buy their own houses, but many people, especially in Lakewood where the poverty rate is above average and there's a high percentage of renters, can't even do this nowadays. And we're telling people, especially poor people who live where the Oaks are often most in danger, just to save up and buy entire tracts of Lakewood? This goes hand in hand with the Assistant City Attorney's comment to me some months ago when she told me that if I was worried about the Oaks, I should plant more. I was similarly taken aback. Buy up the land with the trees, plant more, essentially deal with it yourself. If you live in Madera or Hollyhedge, for example, you probably aren't gonna stay up late at night worrying that your neighbor's gonna level his yard and make a nice speculative warehouse. Don't all of Lakewood citizens deserve to have trees? Please earnestly consider the real ramifications of the mayor and assistant attorneys' comments above and take action now to ensure that private citizens do not have to fight their own city to preserve the quality of life in Lakewood. Preserving and enhancing the quality of life for all the city's citizens is what the offices of mayor, the city council, and city manager are supposed to be for. If they are actively counteracting the most fundamental reason for having a city, then we have to ask ourselves whether even the mere existence of the city is really in all of our best interest. Thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Next is Kat Barlow.
Hello, my name is Kat Barlow, I'm a resident of Tacoma. As a kid, I was falsely taught that elected officials work for the people, that they have the best interests of all community members in mind when they make decisions and they work towards creating a better place for the future. With every Lakewood City Council meeting, it becomes more and more apparent that this council, especially the mayor, does not do these things. In fact, it seems you're actively trying to make the city worse than you found it. The mayor has twice now, in emotional outbursts, shown children who want to be involved that they are not valued or worth listening to. Clearly prejudiced, seeing as previous comments from those under 18 have been accepted and public comment doesn't have an age requirement. The mayor has said that he thinks protecting the environment should be done by individuals saving up money to buy the land they want to protect. So the leader of the city does not think that the children, who are the future, are important and he believes that the environment should be privatized and therefore only appreciated by those who can afford it. Problems would be bad enough if you are not knowingly sacrificing endangered ecosystems. For the sake of what? Being able to list numbers of economic growth for your reelections or to satisfy campaign promises you made? Is it worth the future of the city and all of the residents, including the wealthier people, who it seems are the only ones you care about? We are in the middle of a climate emergency, the scale of which is threatening all of humanity. Right now, there is active climate remediation from rising water levels in your neighboring city. Comment after comment begging you to protect endangered ecosystems that make Lakewood what it is. And what solutions do you have to show? What are you doing right now to prevent this destruction from occurring under your leadership? All you're doing is showing that you don't care and don't want to hear us. But we are not going away, so I would suggest producing results while you are still in office. Thank you.
Next is Julian Wheeler.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, that's too bad. My name's Julian Wheeler, resident of Lakewood and I have some personal comments to make, but I did want to first dispose of an announcement as volunteer chair of the Pierce County Accessible Communities Advisory Committee. Wanted to thank the presenters for Sound Transit on mentioning the accessibility aspects of their proposal and I personally thanked one of them, Katie, who I've known for some years and I actually knew her uncle when he was involved in the RTA campaign in the 90s. And so thankful for the work they've done that's in their family, the public services in their family, so... But I probably embarrassed her, anyway. We have our next regular session of our ACAC meeting on Tuesday, November 9th, on Zoom at 9 o'clock to 11 o'clock. And the public's invited and I provided information to your staff, Brianna, or others, but we are a committee empowered by the Accessible Communities Act of 2010 to aid in the expediting of funds for accessibility projects in Pierce County. We're looking for new members and new ideas and we just, I'm going around at the community, as many people here know, just to generate interest in making the system work for everyone. As when you make it work better for the marginalized, you make it work for everyone. So I also wanted to, you know, say that in response to the comments I've heard about the trees, I just wanted to reiterate from years ago, my concern about the canopy and back then, I actually noticed that the canopy along Gravel Lake Drive was disappearing. You know, the mailboxes in front of the post office on 100th Street, that, they disappeared and I figured there's a process. But I want to make sure we can avoid the moral hazard that would lead to decimating our canopy. And I suggested back then, and I know budget season's coming up, maybe starting a forestry committee or like an advisory commission where the public and experts and elected officials, volunteers can get together and discuss ways to approach the environmental concerns. Thank you, thank you all, I see the doomsday clock is coming down there, so I did, I wanted to say thank you, Mayor Anderson, for last week when you mentioned the impacts of redlining. I think that was helpful for the public to know more about that, particularly Lakewood. And Deputy Mayor Jason, use the F3 button to go through a document to look for a phrase. I saw you were having difficulty with that one time, thank you very much.
And next up is Dennis Haugen.
Hal, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I want to compliment you, Mayor Anderson, on the way you held the, the way you handled the last meeting. It's obvious that some people there didn't felt that they could just disrupt a meeting, which in my mind is illegal. And, and I thought you handled it really well. There is a, there's a storm coming and it's not particularly just something a city can do anything about. It's the federal government and the state. There's, I think there's close to 2 million people have crossed into the country illegally. That's 2 million people, that's a lot of people. And of course, California, Oregon, and Washington are all sanctuary states. They welcome illegal activity. That's gonna dramatically change Lakewood. We're already seeing people moving out, people that are leaders, people that can create jobs. There's not gonna be much left in eight to 10 years for the West Coast unless you can put people in office where outcomes are important. And outcomes means investment and means work. Work is an important part of the, of the formula. And, so I don't know exactly what Lakewood can do, I mean, you've got Seattle, which is crazy. I mean, you've got a mayor that says summer of love while people are demolishing buildings. That's crazy, that's crazy. And it's a violation of the oath that she took as mayor. And of course, the governor didn't do anything. And the first responsibility is, any elected official is to protect the people and their property. And I don't see much enthusiasm for that by many of the elected officials from the bigger city and even from the state. But there again, you're trying hard, your job is gonna get harder because you're gonna get more and more people who don't think the law is important. And they think that illegal activity is okay according to their emotional needs and not the law that protects all of the people. But you did a good job last week, it was done very well against a bunch of crazies that didn't think they needed to follow the rules, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Melissa Knott.
My name is Freya Knott and I'm here to talk and I'm in second grade. And I wanted to say, first of all, you can't say that to my cookum next time, really. That's very rude. And even though I'm not there, I can still say it and I'm not going to go back, even though I'm not there. My cookum is a great person, you just don't even know it. She's a great person and we're not afraid of anything. We're confident of everything that we have to do. Thank you.
Next up is Jenna Lee.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jenna Lee, I am a resident of Seattle. I'd firstly like to second what Ms. Barlow and Ms. Minetti have said. My comment is along those lines. I, again, want to emphasize how improper and shocking it was that, Mr. Mayor, you prohibited children from speaking or attempted to and tried to close public comments and to my knowledge, you lifted that because you were told that's not allowed with the city council policy. Anyway, I'd like to talk about the most recent coffee with the mayor and your comments regarding your advocacy that citizens purchase bits of land in Lakewood to preserve the trees. That's, what I feel is that that comes from an incredible amount of privilege where the people on the ground who are actually living with these trees and fighting with these trees, fighting for these trees, they don't have the funds to, they don't have the expendable income to be able to do that, even if they pool resources together. For instance, I'm a university student, oh, I'm a law school student, actually, UW. I have rent and textbooks and groceries, it's expensive, I pay for healthcare, for my car and other people in the community in Lakewood, they have children and they have multiple jobs or they have a job and they're doing all sorts of volunteering community work that is basically a job, even if they're not being paid. People aren't living the sort of privileged lifestyle that it seems that you're coming from. It's wildly, it's just wildly impractical and unrealistic to suggest that we're able to gather up the resources that these development companies have. Their budgets and ours are just completely uncomparable, like they don't need to worry about their children. The companies aren't people, like they don't need to worry about sending their kids off to college or just providing lunch money for them or paying rent, paying for insurance, like they're not people, we can't compete with that. So, and this is a rather disjointed comment, I didn't really have time to prepare for it, but two main points. Attempts to silence and censor the people as a representative of the people, completely shocking. I don't, I sincerely don't think you deserve to remain in this position, Mr. Mayor, with the conduct you've shown. It's, it's just very shocking and I hope you're replaced by someone who truly understands how difficult it is for people on the ground and how much courage and care it takes for everyone who consistently shows up to these city council meetings need to hold in order for all of this activism to happen. And that's my time.
That's all that, I guess we have another one, another hand up, Teresa Imhold King.
Hello. Hello.
We can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Hello, my name is Teresa King and I am a resident of Lakewood. Just hearing everyone's comments tonight, I'm reminded of a conversation that I had with a friend of mine. I was telling them about the Gary Oaks in Lakewood and they suggested that if they're so valuable to, if they're so valuable to this certain group of people advocating for them, then they should purchase them. And it's just obviously not, it's absurd, it's not realistic. They're not isolated, it's not that simple. And you did say that's not what you meant, but I just had to comment on it. I guess, in the same in the same way, if we care about salmon, we should be buying up rivers. If we care about water quality, we should be purchasing wetlands, again, does not make sense. We should all care about the land and prioritizing preservation concerns of our natural resources. My friend referenced the Sierra Club Land Exchange and I don't know if that's kind of maybe what you were referencing, but that's, that's only in regards to publicly owned land, public land, not land owned by developers. So I'm asking once again for the city to not rezone any neighborhoods. On that, one other thing that I do want to talk about or say something on is, um, it was never my intention to talk about the dynamic that's going on in these meetings or, or any one person, but in regard to the mayor, uh, if Dennis Haugen was the one person defending me, I, I would be bothered. And I, I hope you do take everyone's comments into consideration. And I know we might not all agree or be on the same page, but the people in these meetings say, giving you these public comments, this is their reality and their perception. And I learned a long time ago that perception is everything. It, it can be very powerful. And it doesn't matter whose perception it is, it should be valued and taken into consideration. So that, that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
So that is all the people who have signed up personally or raised their hand online, but it doesn't preclude you from public comment if you haven't already spoken. Is there anyone else present or online who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand or approach the podium, as the case may be. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, declare public comment closed. Now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of August 16th, 2021. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of August 23rd, 2021. C, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of August 30th, 2021. D, motion number 2021-60, reappointing J. Allen Billingsley and Vito Iobazzi to serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board through September 19th, 2024. E, motion number 2021-61, appointing Hank Jones to serve as the youth council representative on the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board for the 2021 through 202022 school year. F, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of June 3rd, 2021. Planning Commission meeting minutes of July 7th, 2021. And three, Planning Commission meeting minutes of September 1st, 2021.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Uh, so moved?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Ms. Boss, that we adopt consent agenda. Is there any further comment or questions? While in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We would now move to ordinance, the regular agenda ordinances. Ordinance number 759, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 759, identifying policies and priorities of use of Lakewood's American Rescue Plan Act funds, approving a certain amount of funds for initial expenditures fitting within specific expenditure categories identified by the Department of Treasury, and establishing a City of Lakewood ARPA program.
Thank you. For this, we have Ms. Spear.
Members of the council, Tiffany Spear with Long Range and Strategic Planning Manager. I'll jump right to sharing my screen. So we are here to talk about the 2021 American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, and there is a potential tonight for the city to be taking action on ordinance number 759. So far, since March, the council has had 10 different meetings, beginning with the March 27th Council Retreat, and then a number of periodic updates. And then starting in August, there was a series of study sessions, and then a public hearing on the 7th of September, a second study session, and then we're here this evening. The discussion that was had at the study session on the 13th included some additional direction from council, creating an unallocated ARPA funds within the tracking line items, removing the vaccination incentives as a potential expenditure, updating the list of approved expenditures, a request to gather additional information on certain items in order to make sure there was full information in front of the council, establishing a formal ARPA fund application process once the ordinance gets adopted, and then showing that there would be additional consideration of items identified to date once that new ARPA program is in place. So apologies if my screen is cut off, but essentially what we're doing tonight in front of council is bringing to you information about the proposed 2021 and 22 Lakewood Police Department Body Camera Program operations costs, which is a question for the council to decide if they want to allocate funds right away. Secondly, would be whether to fund the department's retention bonuses. Third would be if there's any other amendments the council wishes to make on the ordinance, and fourth, adopt the ordinance if the council's ready to do so. I'm going to stop sharing and see if I can get this showing up better on the screen. Does that show better, I hope? On the 7, 27th of September, there is going to be a joint meeting with the Community Services Advisory Board. And what I was informed about this morning is that some of that information coming to you will be regarding how it recommends the use of ARPA dollars in 2022 and 23. They will bring you more detail, but essentially there will be a recommendation that half of those funds go toward workforce development, working with career team, and the other half would be going toward youth mental health. And that may be partnerships with Lakewood's Promise, the Clover Park School District, and then asking the youth council how to best invest those funds. The City of Lakewood has also reached out to Pierce County regarding its pending behavioral health improvement plan, which will be going in front of the county council soon to talk about the potential that school-based health, behavior or mental health services be provided within the Clover Park School District. Just a quick reminder that recipients, including City of Lakewood, will be asked to identify whether funds are being used toward economically disadvantaged communities. And there are certain ways that the funds can be used for disproportionately impacted communities which are identified in Lakewood's qualified census tracts as being Tillicum, Woodbrook, Springbrook, Lakeview, and parts of Montevista. Just moving on to the next set of items, which could be educational disparities, healthy childhood environments, and then health disparities and social determinants of health. This is a map very quickly of where those places are in the city. And then to the right, you'll see that in the initial expenditures identified as of now in your initial enacting ordinance, you've got the 2022 and 23 CSAB allocations, the BIPOC Business Accelerator Program, the 2021 Warriors of Change, the Habitat for Humanity Boat Street Project, the Rebuilding Together, rebuilding a healthy neighborhood program, and then the YMCA programs that would be assisting youth in particular in ARPA-related, all within that disproportionately impacted communities category, for a total right now of a little over $3 million for that type of expenditure. Government services, there was a question about what those government services could be under ARPA, and this was provided to the council last week via email, but just to mention it once more, basically, it's a pretty wide range, but there is the need, first of all, that the cost be incurred by the city after March 3rd of this year, and then that they cannot be used for providing debt service or placement in reserves. Collaborations, one more update for the council's benefits. The Pierce County Representative, Brian Sibley, and I met today to start talking about where there could be potential partnerships between Lakewood and the county. This will continue forward, and the county council is presumed to be discussing ARPA at length within its budget negotiations, which will start tomorrow. The county executive presents his budget to the council tomorrow. The comfort in purchase is underway, and Lakewood is working on the draft contract. Within the contract will be the fact that the city funds are to be used for acquisition, that there be 12 beds reserved in the emergency shelter for Lakewood clients, that administration and services of those 12 beds would be funded by the portion of dollars that Lehigh will receive back in its application for a second round of state rapid acquisition grant award. The Pierce County BIPOC Business Accelerator Program continues to accept applications. The Business Navigator Program is still pending the answer back from the Small Business Administration. The State Infrastructure Partnership is pending the next legislative session. And then on the 29th, so a week from Wednesday, will be the first time that the SHAPE Executive Board meets where there's the potential for developing a request for coordination of cities toward affordable housing. So this is within your packet as well, but this is a chart that reflects, first of all, in the white columns, the areas where the city council last week said either yes, maybe, or potentially defer the amounts of money that are in the following column as part of the initial ordinance expenditures of ARPA funds. In the blue is the area where there was discussion and request for some more information. First of all, whether or not the city council wanted to support not only the purchase of body cameras and video storage, but also the program operations for the first two years, so '21 and '22. And then also whether the council wanted to support the idea of a retention bonus for Lakewood Police Department staff. If everything happens without those blue shaded items that are recommended on the far right, there would be about 50, excuse me, 5,750,000 expenditures, meaning there would be about 8 million left for future allocation. If you were to include those two items, it would jump to 67,72989, which relieve a remaining almost $7 million for future ARPA expenditures. So the chart that the count, the city would be using going forward to track costs has been amended as well per council direction. An unallocated fund line item is now included, and all of this is TBD, depending on how the council decides on the Lakewood Police Department items. So once again, these are the two questions for council this evening, and then additional amendments or action. So with that, I will stop sharing and be ready to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Ms. Spear? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, I had a question about the summary for the Lakewood Police Department body cameras, where, which is the section that is for the capital costs of acquiring the cameras and video and the video storage equipment. And there, am I interpreting this correctly, that 102,904 ARPA funds dedicated to capital, that that number is a result of the fact that $238,260 of state police reform funds for cameras and video are, are offsetting the total cost of that capital investment? Is that how I'm reading this?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. My question would be, could the state police reform funds be used towards the 2021, 2022 biennium operations, the next line down, and increase the, if we increase the amount of ARPA funds being used for the capital purchase?
Um, the way I understand that, that state fund police reform was that they were for one-time purchases, and I don't know if a biennial budget qualifies as such.
Thank you.
Mr. Whalen.
Thank you very much. Tiffany, I had a question on the BIPOC accelerator.
Uh huh.
So with regard to the proposed $525,000 allocation by Lakewood, how is that going to be administered through this existing Pierce County website program staffing? How is that working for the benefit of Lakewood if we throw in 525,000 to the pot? Is that allocated specifically just for Lakewood businesses then?
Um, that would be the intention, generally speaking. The program overall has $5 million coming in from the county, and then they did request funds not only from Lakewood, but several other cities as well. And the intention of the county's Economic Development Department is to recruit applicants, instructors, and locations for training throughout the county. So they're purposely trying to move things out into a geographically equitable area, including the city of Lakewood. And so whether it is the people that are teaching the classes are from Lakewood to teach those specific Lakewood students, I don't know, but I do know that they are recruiting both students and instructors from the area.
So, so my next question is, it's with great intention that I think the county and certainly the city is doing that, and for good reasons, but was there any sort of study and method behind the madness of the allocation? Did they do some background work and they came up with a defined sort of business plan, if you will, based upon needs of the community as expressed through some sort of outreach?
I don't know the details of how the county developed its program from the very start. I know Becky Newton, our Economic Development Manager, was involved earlier than I was, and I was provided the $500,000 request through Ms. Newton, so she may be able to answer some more questions.
Okay. It just seems like a, you know, a very large sum from the county, plus the others from neighboring jurisdictions like Lakewood. So I'm hopeful that it does something, but it's like throwing a lot of money with a big wish that something great transpires. And I just would love to know that there was more meat behind the program, you know? I'm hopeful that it's very successful and it serves the right people.
Any other questions from Ms. Spear? If not, I'd entertain a motion on ordinance number 759.
I move adoption of ordinance 759.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Mr. Whalen, that we adopt ordinance number 759. Before we move to discussion, whether there are any amendments anyone wishes to offer. Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That, I am thankful that we're at a point of consideration of this ordinance. And I'm also thankful that we've been deliberative in that we just didn't rush to spend money as soon as we heard about it. And that the ordinance is a step in that it indicates some expenditures that we have determined are going to be effective and in the best interests of the city, or in some cases, the region, to be able to go through and do that. That, that being said, I would like to turn to the, the recommendations from staff regarding the Lakewood Police Department body camera of 2021, 22 biennium operations. And that I would move to amend the initial city council direction action column in, attached in exhibit C, where the Lakewood body cameras, 2021, 22 biennium operational costs to yes, and to add $350,651 to the amount column.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
The motion to amend. It's been moved and seconded that we amend the recommendation to add $356,651 for 2021, 22 biennial expended, operational expenditures for LPD body cameras. It's Mr. Branstadter's amendment, wish to speak in amendment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think that the, the near-term operational costs in our current biennium that were not included in our biennial budget are symbiotic with the capital expense to purchase the body cameras, which was an acceler, which were using ARPA funds to accelerate the timeline by which we were looking to go and do that. And I, I think that this is something that enhances the community as well as, as, as the department specifically, but that to purchase the cameras without funding the operational aspect of doing that for what is going to be about 12 months by the time we get the cameras and install them, but once they're started. time we get the cameras installed them, but once they're starting to be used, we need to have the operational pieces in place. And that funding needs to come from somewhere, and the fact that it's coming from the revenue replacement elements of ARPA seems appropriate to me.
Any further discussion on the amendment? A call for the question on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Closed.
Right.
The motion carries. We now move to the ordinance, seven-fifty-nine is amended. Is there any further amendment? Mr. Whalen?
Just discussion for a moment. I, before we move to adopt or not, the motion is amended, I just wanted to get some discussion on the table whether we're all really in on the YMCA allocation for five years. I'm all about support for the youth, but within that budget allocation, there were all sorts of identified populations that they were going to invest more additional monies into, and I didn't get a level of comfort that that the Y couldn't do it without existing budgets in lieu of the ARPA monies, but that's just me. I'm fine with the other allocations, the Boys and Girls Club, and perhaps some amount for the YMCA, but it just seemed like a pretty large amount of money to commit to for a full five-year period of time. I throw it out for discussion, it's just my comment, I'm not asking to amend yet.
Mr. Bulkey?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a, I do have a point of order, I guess, on, we have a, something in front of us, and it's a budget items, and both in the case of the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA, it says maybe. I've never seen that in budgeting.
Right.
So I guess I'm not, I'm completely confused.
Right.
It's, yeah, it's either, either they shouldn't be in there at all, or they should be in there.
Good point.
I thought last week when I brought these both up, the will of the council kind of was like, yeah. I mean, my notes have it weighed on.
Mr. Mayor?
Back in here under a weight provision, which I don't, what does weight mean? What would classify? How, how would weight be triggered? I'm lost, I guess, and I'm, I'm not aware of that as a budget term. Ms. Spear?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies for jumping in, but to clarify, the way this is being drafted is that the funds are being shown as supported by council for dedication to either Boys and Girls Club or YMCA. However, those organizations will need to apply for those funds and satisfy the criteria that are set up through the ARPA program before any dollars go to them at all. And so as Mr. Bulkey was just saying, weight isn't really a budget item. It is something where the council expressed support for these two groups, but the decision to actually allocate any funds to them through the program is yet to be determined based on their application.
I, I don't know if it's a proviso or, but I wrestle with this in my, my day job with human services contracts, and I was just reading an article talking about the bill and Will and the Gates Foundation today from an East Coast magazine, and how they, every, these aren't grants, it's a contract, it's a contract for services, and it's a contract for services with metrics, and there's measurement of the metrics, and there's a determination whether there is a satisfactory outcome, and if the outcomes aren't there, they phase into another program. We don't have that luxury with that much money and that time, but I think we do have the opportunity to contract for services instead of just saying, here's a check, and say, you, you're going to do this program, you're going to serve this many students or individuals, you're going to do it for this long, you're going to try to present this as a potential result. And so I'm comfortable with the amount of money and the organizations are going to, as long as it's not just supplanting their normal budget, they're contracting for a particular service to be provided, because I think there's a great need for things for the youth that's coming out of COVID and the socialization. Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly acknowledge that on the, in the, in the budget agenda, particularly in Exhibit C, there are items on there that we really are, need more information on that before we actually go approve and authorize the city manager to move forward with expending them. And I, I think that the format of Exhibit C is more of a work in progress than what we, what is needed to implement the intent of this ordinance. This ordinance is intended to make specific approval of expenditures that allows the city manager to move forward and expend them, and that the things that are on this list that are not, that we're not looking to approve via this ordinance, and other things that aren't on this list at all, but that I think are still possible under consideration, are future work. And to the extent of the fact that the ordinance, Section Four, says that the items described in Exhibit C are approved for funding, that it will be, I would try to clarify Exhibit C, and I would move to amend Exhibit C to delete all items in Exhibit C that do not have a yes in the city council direction action column, and to delete the portion of Exhibit C that speaks to additional recommendations, because...
It's been a motion to amend to strike from Exhibit C all items that are not designated as a yes.
A second.
It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Ms. Farmer. Discussion on the motion to amend, Mr. Branstadter, your amendment.
I would just say that my amendment is not intended to make any decision about the items being deleted, just that they are, those are things to be considered in the future, and their fate, if you will, and their, and their value to the community and as respect to using ARPA funds is still to be determined. Many of them have very favorable potential, once we get some, some more information, as well as some other things. And so I am merely looking to make sure that we have an exhibit that is consistent with Section Four of the basic ordinance, and that is only listing things that we're actually giving approval for.
All right. Any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Whalen?
I would support the amendment as seconded to remove those items, because we have further opportunities certainly to discuss them. I would also throw out there, for what it's worth, that items involving youth, such as the Boys and Girls Club's allocations and the YMCA allocations, are a good opportunity for us to work somewhat collaboratively with the school district to determine what they perceive the needs to be in student populations, or after-school programming, perhaps summer activity programming, so that that would be a wonderful opportunity to do something collaborative with, with funding that we have. In the second issue, I just wanted to ask, I know part of the amendment would defer and not adopt for tonight's action or direction to the manager to expend funds, the LPD retention bonus. So my question is, as we defer until the mid-biennial budget review, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? And the question to the city manager is, how emergent from his professional judgment is that issue, given that you do have the mid-biennial budget discussion forthcoming?
Deputy Mayor Whalen, it is a high priority item for us. My, you know, the reason I made the recommendation that it be included here is because of that, and would like to have access to the funds sooner rather than later. By incorporating it as part of the mid-biennial budget review, it will not go into effect until, I think, you know, if you, you know, based on your current calendar and previous years, the mid-biennial budget ordinance would be considered by this body in the middle to latter part of November, which means it goes into effect in early December, so that's essentially two months from now. You know, we are losing officers, primarily to retirement. A number of officers have bumped up their retirement, many more are considering it, and this has just happened in the last two to three months. We knew this was coming, and we had been planning for it, and we had been recruiting accordingly. However, again, in the last two to three months, a number of officers who said that they were going to retire two, three, or even four years down the road have now bumped it up. Right now, we're very, very short-staffed. The good news is we just hired a couple of laterals, but I need officers in double digits. I'm not just down, you know, a handful. So again, my recommendation is to utilize the ARPA monies to be able to do this sooner, so I can at least provide some kind of an incentive to try and hold on to the officers that we have over the next three years. And the reason we came up with three years is we felt that that was adequate, given, you know, the timeline for folks who have identified when they want to retire. And so that will then allow us to, you know, continue with our recruitment that we had, you know, put in place, you know, several, several years ago. I also want to say that, you know, at the same time, there's no guarantee that this will work, but myself and the chief feel that we, we need to, we need to do something.
So as I, addressing that first, as I interpret the motion on the table as modified by adopted amendment, the, the retention bonus is not included.
It's not included.
All right. Well, we'll just do, do one amendment at a time here. So we're still working on removing everything without a yes in the amount column for, under nine thirteen initial city council direction. Is there any further discussion on that amendment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. The motion on the second amendment carries. Now move back to discussion on the motion as twice amended. Mr. Whalen?
I would make a third amendment to include in Exhibit C, under action, a yes for the LPD retention bonus, to give the city manager discretion to exercise his authority with the chief to apply the retention bonus as stated.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Amendment dies for lack of a second. We now go back to the motion as twice amended. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one additional amendment, and I would move under findings to delete the last whereas, which is found on the top of page thirty-five of our agenda packet. And it's, well, that's my motion to do that.
There a second? Did we consider the public input? It states where, oh, would be, the motion is to amend the motion by removing the words "whereas the city council completed its consideration of public input and its deliberations regarding policies and allocations of the ARPA funds on September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one." Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Ms. Farmer, that we adopt the amendment deleting the last whereas. Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Well, yeah, Mr. Mayor, that basically, I'm asking to remove the whereas because it isn't accurate. We're, with this, with this, with this ordinance, we're not completing our consideration or our deliberations of the allocations to use ARPA funds. And also, in deleting this whereas, doesn't require a substitute finding, and it allows the, the ordinance to proceed going on, and I'm more comfortable with that, without that whereas than, as a finding than with it.
I would just note that I'm, I'm in favor of the amendment, if for no other reason, that after forty years of practicing law and fourteen years on council, I think we should do away with all wherashes. Let me happen with that. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. Motion carries. We're back to the thrice amended motion. Is there any further amendments to be offered? Is there any further discussion? Mr. Bulkey?
So we've mentioned several items, and, and with the Boys and Girls Club and YMCA, and I thought our goal was that we would somehow set up, is our plan, if I took the discussion right from last week, the plan was to set up some kind of program where they would have to apply. But that means we have to have parameters around a program for them to apply to, and I'm just wondering kind of what the, for the folks that said, hey, let's put this program together, what's, what's the, what's the plan? What's the timeline?
What's the need, right? Identifiable need.
I think we should get to school district. I think, I would request staff to reach out, both to the school district and to those two organizations, to get their input on what the need is, particularly as it's related to the pandemic. I know the one thing that is almost at a crisis stage is daycare, and maybe there's a younger kids after-school program that could be enhanced, it gives some working parents relief. You know, I, I'm not in the business of providing those services, so I wouldn't be the one to do anything more than make an educated guess, but. Well, yeah, on a non-industrial scale. Any further discussion? I have one comment, if, with respect to the Lakewood Community Services Advisory Board one percent funding, my understanding of that is that it's enhancing the existing funds to be allocated in the normal manner, and it appeared to me that there was a suggestion or some type of action that had been taken by committee without any knowledge that there'd been a, in my part, that there'd been an application process, a selection process, and in fact, in one case, it said, we're going to let some people decide later how the money's going to be spent. And maybe I have a different understanding of that, but, well, for plusing up the fund, but not doing away with the allocation process.
I think you have kind of like an answer around. Is that cool?
Yeah. Yes. I didn't, I didn't, yeah, I didn't see something that said, go forth and spend, I said, go forth and enhance your normal process, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
I believe next week, the Community Services Advisory Board will be in front of you for a joint study session, and they will be able to clarify better what their thought process has been than what I provided tonight in summary.
That'd be good. All right, Ms. Brandstetter.
Yeah, my understanding was that we are allocating them that amount of funds for them to use in the same process that they have always used with the one percent allocation of funds that we have given them as a planning number to make recommendations to us to, to do that. But I do think that the joint study session coming up is a good place to have the discussion that Councilmember Bulkey indicated of that, about what is the process to move through for some of these larger requests, but that really do fall within some of the areas that the, that, that committee does research into the community and looks at evaluating to do that. So I think the joint session is, is a good time to take a look at, at, at those things and, and clarify the, the process.
Yeah, the, the other thing is, at this point, I doubt they have any better insight than we do as to what the county and the state are going to do that, that funding may be supplanting if it was spent early. Any further discussion on the thrice amended motion? Call for the question. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries. Spent six million dollars. We now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There's none, Mayor.
New business, motion number twenty twenty-one day sixty-two. Madam Clerk.
Motion number two thousand and twenty-one dash sixty-two, appointing a member and alternate member to the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Executive Board.
The, the standing of expressed interest at this point was Mr. Brandstetter said no to either position. Ms. Farmer said she might do it if she can get relief from Pierce County Regional Council. But, could you just sound? And I personally, I'd be willing, if no, if we don't have two people step up, I'd be willing to be the alternate, but not the primary.
Because just one meeting every other one?
No? No.
Miss Melchior. How's it? I could maybe do it depending on the timing and what it is, if you know. If you take over arts commission, I just can't do it.
I actually would be very interested in serving.
Oh, you would? Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, 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 so. So is there somebody else willing to be an alternate here?
I could be an alternate. We coordinate a little bit.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Go forth and cross. So I entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Farmer as the primary and Mr. Whalen as the alternate. I will, for the shape committee, our members will be Councilmember Farmer as the appointed member and Deputy Mayor Whalen as the alternate. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that Ms. Farmer be appointed to the shape board with Mr. Whalen as the alternate. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Thank you. We now move to reports by the city manager. Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. First up, I'd like to call up our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth, to provide you first, first, an update on city-sponsored fireworks display options. This is something that the council asked for during the budget process. So Ms. Dawsworth has some ideas and some options for your consideration. And then while she's up here, since we had to cancel the twenty-fifth anniversary celebration last Saturday because of weather, I'll have her give you an update on what's planned for this coming Saturday. So with that, Ms. Dawsworth.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Thanks for allowing me to come in tonight and share some information on fireworks. When council was considering changing the code, I know council's been talking about fireworks for years and years in lots of different ways. And so one of the suggestions was the possibility of doing, I think at the time, it was a Fourth of July fireworks display. It's maybe a safe alternative to individuals doing personal fireworks. Since that time, we've talked a lot about fireworks, and I have gathered some information for you, presented it to you in your packet. So I'll share a little bit with you tonight and then be happy to answer your questions. I'm, of course, not a pyrotechnician, but I have learned an awful lot over the last several months. And anyway, let's just get started that way. So as many opinions regarding fireworks as there could be, that's sort of what we've heard. And I think you've heard that as a council as well. We've heard from folks that love fireworks. We've heard from folks that are concerned about fireworks for a variety of reasons. And so there, I, I wish that there was just a real consistent message or a real consistent batch of information. What we do know is, is that primarily Fourth of July and New Year's Eve are the dates when most communities allow personal fireworks and have some kind of fireworks celebrations. We also know that if the city was interested in doing any kind of a display, our code and the state law allows us to do that as a community display. And West Pierce Fire would be the group we would work with just to make sure that it was safe and permitted. So those things are the, are the things that we do know. So there's different kinds of fireworks shows that you could do. There are, of course, you know, personal fireworks. And nowadays, it seems like individuals can purchase larger kinds of demonstrations than they could in the past. There's professional companies that come out and do what, what's called low-level fireworks. And that's kind of like when you see the Seahawks run out of the tunnel and they have sort of things on the ground that are quite low-level, shooting up. And, and those can be done in different areas. Again, looking at safety. And some folks do that, like, for instance, the Chamber has suggested possibly doing that as a kickoff to their blue lights in, over the holidays. People do that a lot, a lot more with sporting events. And then there's the large-scale displays that go into the sky. And those are, it's about a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars a minute is what they go with. And it's based on how high it goes and how big it explodes and how many you have together. A typical presentation is about fifteen to twenty minutes. And you'll see that at Cheney Stadium. The Town of Stillingham does one. You know, you see them around the community. Regarding the Fourth of July, there seems to be an awful lot happening on the Fourth of July already. A lot of communities nearby are doing them. Private homeowners associations and individuals are doing them. So there seems like there's a lot of happening right now. One of the things that I did learn about that was that there's an awful lot of talk about the environmental impacts of fireworks up in the sky. It does create debris, chemicals in the air, affects the water and the land and the, in the air. And so one of, you know, sort of what my research came out is, is that there are a lot of folks are transitioning to things like laser shows, drone shows, enlightened shows, if you're going to do that kind of celebration. And it was new to me. I hadn't really, we've all seen them, but not really known. Maybe they were drone shows when you've watched, like, the Olympics or some of these big-scale events, maybe on TV. And those are very expensive. Those were, Intel is the company that started the drone shows and the laser shows. And, and they, they called me back and they started about a hundred thousand dollars. But there's also companies out there that do more localized shows, just like companies that do the fifteen, twenty-minute fireworks shows. There are local drone shows. And so I did put a link in your packet, and Brianna can show you a quick little link if you didn't see that. She's got that up. We could show a minute or so, so you can kind of get an idea of what that could be like. Do you have that ready? And the, this was a kind of a holiday-featured one. So you'll see some of the things look like a tree or a bell or something. You'll see it on your screen. And it's a way of having that kind of experience in the air without the pollution or environmental impacts, I guess I should say. Based on the, as you're looking at that, based on the information that I've provided you, this is about the type or the, the size. Two hundred drones is kind of the, I wanted to sort of compare apples to apples from a time and a cost perspective. So that would be about a two hundred drone show, so to speak. And the cost is between about twenty and thirty thousand, just like a, a display would be, a fireworks display would be as well. There's also groups that do, like, laser light shows because typically it's in the night. And I'm not as familiar with the footprint, but again, it's shooting light into the sky. You know, one of the conditions that we would need to work with is just because we are in the McCord airflow or air zone. We do have an agreement with them, but we have a relationship with them. And so we would communicate with them regarding anything like that, fireworks or some kind of drone. But you can see this is, it's not quite as bombs bursting in air, even though they do have drones that look like fireworks going. You just don't have that. And it does, you can sync that to music as well. That's probably a good example. Brianna, do we just hit the little button here? There we go. So, so I provided three options for you to have a conversation about. I know because when you talked about this, this was quite some time ago. We were going to bring it to you, but your councils have been quite full on all of the conversations that you've needed to chat about. So the three, the three kind of options that I sort of presented to you, and you certainly might come up with something else is, one is, is would you do a post-to-Fourth of July display? I do think the air is pretty saturated in that. And, you know, we have a lot of, we don't do a Fourth of July festival in Lakewood. And so it would be sort of a one-shot thing, event. And I did put a group of costs together for you. One of the biggest deals isn't just coming to watch it, but how do you manage the spectators? How do you manage the traffic? How do you manage the impact of all those individuals? And if you're doing a one-and-done, you're paying not only for the display, but for all of the, you know, the risk, safety that you need to do around those events. The second idea was if you're going to do something like that, it would make more sense to tie it to something that we're already doing. And probably the most likely would be our Summerfest activity. We're already dealing with thousands of people with parking, sanitation, garbage. And it's already an event that we're working on. It would just add another element to that with all the other things that we're doing. And then the third option would just be, great information. Thanks for sharing. Maybe we'll try something else another year. So, nah, status quo, I think, is the word the city manager used. So those would be, those are three potential options. And, and then I'll just be happy to answer your questions, gather more information, or have you talk amongst yourself and go from there. We don't have funds, fun, we don't have a budget, a budgeted item at this point for something like fireworks. It would need to be something that we would need to, there, find sponsorship or some other way of funding it. Add it to the budget.
I mean, assuming you had some budgeted funds for Summerfest this year, would you supplant the movie? Or, you know, what would you typically do with something like this?
We would, we would, I would say probably, I mean, it wouldn't make, it would have to be after the movie then. And so that would be really, really late, I think, for families and people. So we would probably look at that as an alternative to the movie. Probably have music and entertainment up until that point and have it be the finale and then send people on their way.
It'd be kind of cool with music that goes with that.
Yeah, we would sync it. Typically, they sync it to music, or we would work with syncing it to music. So it would be a part of that finale.
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Dawsworth, the one that you said was twenty to thirty thousand dollars, how long is that a display?
It'd be typically about fifteen minutes, fifteen to twenty minutes, depending on how many drones and lights, if you were thinking drones or fireworks.
And the laser, how was that one?
It would be about the same. Yeah, I was trying to sort of compare the same timeframe and a dollar amount. So you're working at about fifteen to twenty minutes. And it would be of entertainment, whatever you chose for the type of entertainment, whether it was a fireworks display, drone display, or lights and lasers, or a combination thereof.
So it would be better to have it in conjunction with something that we're already doing as part of?
It would be more efficient from our resources, for sure. Because you're already, you know, if you're asking ten thousand plus people to come and look at something fun, at a point where you're already accommodating those individuals.
Thank you.
Have you checked with the FAA regarding the laser show?
I haven't. You know, that was just something that sort of came up when I was looking at some different research. And so I haven't really done that yet to find out if that's feasible in this area. I know that we do have those relationships with the military and with FAA. We could check on that. I don't know what the, if that, I don't know much more about that.
Having seen the world's largest water and laser show in Dubai.
Oh, yeah.
I can see those things flying up in the air in a flight path from, but not, it's kind of off the side for the base, but it actually might get in the way of CTAC and their further approach.
Dubai are, that, there's examples on the web of some of those big shows. That's getting more towards that Intel more expensive option than, maybe what we would have local.
I was researching this, Mr. Whalen's water feature.
Yeah.
Mr. Brandstetter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you shouldn't encourage the deputy mayor by talking about water features. But Ms. Dawsworth, my, I appreciate the, the work that you've gone into looking at options for us. I think there's a lot of possible outcomes here on your chart about pros and cons to do that. I, I think that the top of our list is of folks in the community is doing something that is safe, but that also becomes an alternative to others actually using fireworks. And as we move forward to a single day, you know, as the chief of police told us, it's going to take a number of years before you wean all the fireworks users off of, off of doing it. But we cut down. I, I, I guess I would say that I would be like to seriously look at the possibility of doing a drone show. And I also think that to, to reach the impact of being the substitute for personal fireworks, we would need to do one on the fourth. On the other hand, because it doesn't have the environmental impact in being able to go and do that, we may want to consider doing two in, in order to build enthusiasm for looking at drone shows that long-term would have the impact of reducing folks wanting to just do their personal fireworks shows to do that. And it, I also tend to think that a drone show, although a fireworks display could be, can also be for people in attendance, but can also be a virtual city event, a hybrid event that, that goes on to include with the music. And that they, and it may be like some football games. Better to look at them virtually than, than to be in attendance in the stadium. So I'd encourage you to do that. I think that one of the things we would, we would really be interested in doing is if, whether it would be for Summerfest of 2022, that perhaps we can do a drone show so that we get public reaction before we say, this is going to be a substitute, substitute for a fireworks display. Because if it gets a good reaction, then that's a way we can move forward. And we are in a period of time of where a, a drone show being much more environmentally appropriate is consistent with our implementing a climate and environmental policy and being more, more attuned to those sorts of things. And there's nothing wrong with being the community that is unique in doing. And there's nothing wrong with being the community that is unique and doing something new and different in the region. So I, you know, would like to get those things further researched to the extent that we would get some point in the time where we could get, get to making a decision. And recognize that hand in hand with all of this goes to, if we decide on a strategy, are we in the first half of 2022 going to change the allowable fireworks dates for 2023?
I might even go one farther if we do a, some sort of test or initial tryout for, for Summerfest. But look at the possibility of what we could do for New Year's to be unique. Nobody in Pierce County does anything on New Year's. And maybe drones spell out. Yeah. They don't do a calendar. They don't do anything that's, and that's been kind of fits and spurts as far as people wandering around. But drone spells out 2022 at midnight, music players, maybe. Yeah. Yes, yeah. So just another possibility, my request.
Mr. Wayland?
I'm with, I'm with Mr. Branster. I think we can maybe get consensus to give you a thumbs up for maybe Summerfest 2022, maybe July 4th this next, something this next year. Or we can perhaps, you know, utilize some of the backfield general fund revenues to at least seed plant to get, to get a program going this next year in 2022. I think it would be a worthwhile, worthwhile program to, to start. Whether it's Summerfest or July 4th, I don't really care, but something would be good to start. You know, we came with this idea of doing something on July 4th, and so it would make sense. But I hear what you're saying about all the other issues with regard to crowd control and staffing and such. But I throw it out there for discussion.
Ms. Bell? Thank you. I would be in support of a drone show or something like that to make Summerfest very super, just fabulous, because hopefully it'll be coming back in 2022. So it would be nice to have something that really kicks it off, that's something that's very different and something that's unique. I remember when you did the hot air balloons. So something like, hey, we're going to have a drone light show here, I think would be a really nice feature along with all the other amazing things you have going on. So I would be in support of that.
Anyone else? Mr. Coffield? Back to you.
Just actually just wanted to get clarification, Mayor. So what's the council consensus? You want us to come back, come back and plan for a drone show at the 2022 Summerfest? That's.
I think there is.
Yeah. How about something on Independence Day in 2020? How about something on Independence Day in 2022? Or stay focused on Summerfest?
I'd say.
I think, I'd like a little bit more information. I'm curious if it's a fifteen minute drone show, it would be an awful lot of effort to go to, to get people parked and ready to go. And, and then, oh, twenty minutes and they have to turn right around and get back in their cars again. And so, for, for the July. But it is my preference is that we're trying to get people away from doing their own personal fireworks. And so the idea was really to do something on the Fourth of July. So it's my preference to see us do something on the Fourth of July versus Summerfest. But I'm not opposed to, to maybe kicking it off at Summerfest and seeing how, how it works. I don't know how many people come out of the area for Summerfest versus, you know, we're trying to.
Huge.
So I think part of what we were trying to do with the no fireworks was to save the people who live here and our pets and our environment and that sort of thing. And so putting on a drone show at something where we get a ton of outside folks coming in doesn't really meet the mark, as far as I'm concerned. But again, if we want to try it, to do something.
I'd like to see it. I first, I think that the Summerfest is a good opportunity for that as a, as a test. I don't know that if it has enough sizzle, pun intended, to, to compete with the fireworks display. And it might leave somebody flat. But if it's a part of a big celebration at Summerfest, that criticism would be muted. Also, the elephant in the room is, is that we aren't going to get rid of illegal fireworks until the federal government changes its definition of legal fireworks, because the tribal reservations around us can sell federally legal fireworks that aren't legal in this, to sell in the state of Washington. So unless that law changes, we really can't do anything about it. We can squeeze a little, but you can't eliminate it, or even come close. So.
I'll do my best.
So, back to you, Mr. Coffield. There's your consensus.
Thank you, Mayor. And actually, I think Ms. Dodsworth, I'd like to just give an update on the 25th anniversary event for this Saturday.
Yes, thank you. So this Saturday will be the postponed 25th anniversary event. We're excited and people seem to be pretty excited about it. Got a lot of good feedback that we weren't going to have people out in the rain. So we're, I think we're going to have a great turnout. We did condense the time a little bit. It, so it'll be from four till eight PM with the five o'clock presentation that we were expecting from before. So that, that time hasn't changed. It's going to be a great event. Masks will be required because we are anticipating over 500 people and we'll be in this outdoor setting. So we have great food trucks that'll be there representing all kinds of different countries. If you're interested in what we have, we have Filipino food and poke food, which is Hawaiian. We have Jamaican food. We have Mexican food. We have Southern food and all American food, plus lots of fun desserts like ice cream and popcorn and donuts and funnel of love and probably a few other fun things. We've got a lot of our traditional vendors, some of our favorite vendors from the farmer's market, which will make it fun and people can wander around. We also have a good group of our partners, our community partners will be out there, sharing all the great things that they do. One of the things that we require for all of our partners is they have to do something to add to the event. So they'll be bringing games and arts and crafts and other kinds of fun things to the event. We will also be having our time capsule. It's really cool. So we've been gathering things for our time capsule. It'll be on display at the historical museum. They're going to leave it on display for a while. And the great part about that is that we can add to it. If someone, you know, people come in and they take a look and they're like, oh, I remember that, or I have this. So we'll be able to add to that information as well. I, the Historical Society will also be showing their Ivan display. That's really going to be a cool thing that really brings people to that area. And it's really a wonderful opportunity for our historical, Historical Society. We will have static displays with the fire department, the police department, great entertainment. We have great international entertainment. We have dancers from Thailand and entertainment from Mexico, the Korean drummers. We have entertainment from southwest Africa and Guam. We have a really good band that'll be playing with some great dance music. We'll have kids karaoke. We'll have games, all kinds of big family games, giant chests and checkers and Connect Four and that kind of fun stuff. If you've been out at Farmer's Market, you've seen we put those games out there. And it really draws families together and folks that want to get out there and play. We're going to be showing the mural that some of you were able to attend the unveiling of the Unity mural. The city worked with the school district and LMCC to support this mural that was made by the kids. And it's really representative of our community. So we'll be showing that. Also, we'll have all of the art winners from the 25th anniversary art contest. That was last February. Seems like a really long time ago, not that long ago. We'll be posting all of that as well as some photography that has some history and nostalgia of the city. And then at the city booth, we'll have, that's where our VIPs will check in, which you are all VIPs. And we have a lot of great people coming back that were, you know, original council members, our military partners, school district, et cetera. So the VIPs will be able to check in and get a sticker that shows that they're a VIP as well as a treat. And we'll have a spin the wheel. We'll be giving away prizes and swag. And we've got a lot of great businesses, prizes and things from our local businesses that they'll be giving away. We'll be honoring those businesses that have been here for 25 years and beyond. So it's really going to be a fun day. The sun's going to be out. The street's going to be active. And we hope to see you all there. Are there any questions or?
Questions? Good weather?
Oh, yeah. We ordered the sunshine. Uh huh.
All right. The order was in late last week.
Yeah.
Plenty of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
I'm just got a couple of quick items, Mayor and Council. I think it's last week I had reported that the city's population for the 2020 census came to be 63,612 people. However, there was some other information that got released last week I thought you might be interested in, in that there are 15 cities now in the Puget Sound region that have 50% or more of their people, or are people of color, to include Lakewood. Lakewood is actually at 50, at 54%. So just wanted to share that with you. And most of those cities are in King and Pierce County. There's only one in Snohomish County. A couple of opportunities for proclamation as part of your next meeting on October 4th. The first is, last week, we were approached by the Tacoma Pierce County Economic Development Board. They're doing some collection of some donations and such to help out our healthcare workers. And what they're asking their city and county partners to do is to issue a proclamation declaring the month of October 2021 Healthcare Heroes Month. And that would, to be recognized and support our healthcare workers here in the South Sound, including in Lakewood, St. Clair's Hospital, which is part of the Virginia Mason Franciscan Healthcare Corporation. And so my recommendation is that you move forward with that proclamation. In addition, Councilmember Bell, she, she mentioned today that September 15th through October 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month, which celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of those whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, Caribbean, and Central and South America. And matter of fact, the city of Lakewood actually issued this proclamation back in the early 2000s. So it's not something new, but you haven't done it for, for some time. And again, the recommendation, if the council's so inclined to move forward with that proclamation at your next regular meeting, meeting as well. Last week, as a follow up to a work session where this body was briefed on the 2021 Buildable Lands Report and growth target populations, myself, a long range and strategic planning manager Tiffany Spear, and our assistant city manager Dave Buer, we met with our Pierce County Council member Jenny Hitchens last week to provide her an update on the same report, to give her a perspective of where Lakewood's position is in this, in this realm here. It seemed to be very, very well received. We also communicated to her that this issue was going to be making itself, making its way through the PCRC board, which then will make a recommendation to the full county council itself for, for, for action. And pointed out that Deputy Mayor Wayland and Councilmember Farmer are, are, are on that. And so she did point out that she is an alternate on that body, but she does keep track of, of what's going on. And then myself and Shelley Helder from our government relations team, we met with Senator Twina Nobles, just to touch bases on the upcoming legislative session. And really, we focused on the potential for a transportation package, including the city's ongoing request for the $250,000 for the multimodal study throughout the I-5 corridor between Lakewood and Dupont, as well as our support for the continued improvements along the I-5 corridor, particularly the extension of the HOV lane from South Tacoma all the way into Lakewood. Though also, since we're now getting underway with, you know, another interchange at Silicon Dupont, that means the next interchange that needs to be addressed is at JBLM. And really, there's three reasons for that. One is just the ingress and egress off of the I-5 in terms of congestion. The second is from a safety standpoint, because we would get great separation with the railroad, just as we do at, just as we now have at North Thorne Lane, Berkeley, and in the near future, going to have at the Dupont-Stiligum Road. And then also, from a national security and safety standpoint, allows the base to have one point of entry as opposed to two that they currently have with JBLM Maine and JBLM North. So that was a, that was a good conversation. And then the last item that we talked to her about as far as a key priority is, you know, really having a conversation and how to address, how DSHS releases people from state facilities such as Western State and Eastern State into less restrictive alternative facilities such as adult family homes and things along those lines. And again, we had a, a good conversation there and just provided her some history and some of the challenges that were faced here in, here in Seattle. So again, overall, I thought it was a good conversation. And she was a good listener and, and took, took it all in. And we really appreciated her, her time there. As far as upcoming events, you know, this Tuesday, it's kind of flying low under the radar. So hopefully you've received some emails and an opportunity to register. But United Way of Pierce County is celebrating their 100th year of being here and servicing our region and our community. And they're having a virtual centennial rally, just a nice virtual event. It's from 5:14 to 6:14 on Tuesday. And if you haven't seen it, I'd be more than happy to, you know, forward you the link to register. And it's virtual, it's free. I, you know, Donna Pena Pinto, she always puts on a great event. If you haven't had, you haven't attended any of them, all of our virtual events are fantastic. But I just wanted to call that out and make you aware of that. And then, of course, we have our anniversary event on, on, on Saturday. And then also, the Lakewood Arts Festival Association, which this body supports with some lodging tax monies each year, is going to be having their ninth annual FAB, their Film, Art and Book Fest at the McGavick Center. And that will be the weekend of October 8th, 9th, and 10th. And again, if you haven't attended that, that's always a fun and interesting event. And one of the leaders of that event, Phil Raski, he always puts on a great, a great show. And so again, just wanted to bring that to your attention. So with that, Mayor, that's, that's my report.
Any questions for Mr. Coffield? Then we'll move to council comments. Ms. Moss, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be back. It was good to get away. I just wanted to comment on the 25th anniversary. LMCC will have a booth there. And we are sponsoring Michael Powers. So there'll be some good music. Michael Powers will be, we are partnering with the city to sponsor him. So, so that'll be fun. One of the things that I wanted to bring up is the comments, some public comment. And Mr. Spink talked about some of the historical items that he's trying to get. I know we're not going to financially get them based on his comments. But is there anything we can do to help him regain those historical pieces that he's talking about?
You're looking at me, Councilmember Moss?
Mr. Spinks, when he was talking about
Yeah.
the items that, historical items that he found that were, he does not have the ability to obtain them. Is there anything we can do to help him other than financially?
I don't know, Councilmember Moss. We would, if, if the council directs me, we can have somebody go meet with him and find out what the, what, what's going on. That was the, his comments tonight was the first time I heard that.
I, I just, it just sounded like he needed help. And that's what I was trying to figure out, if there's something we can do.
So Deputy Mayor Wayland's volunteered to reach out to him and see if he can get more information. One thing you might find is if they're Native American artifacts, they were taken in violation of federal law, at least current federal law. And the tribes who have this as usual customary, it would be entitled to repatriation of that. So one thought, like, when he was making a statement, was to engage the Nisquallys, who are the most frequent in this area. And if they have claim to them, help them get it back. And in exchange, ask them to provide us with a loan to Lakewood Museum. All right. So it's one avenue. I don't know about horseshoes.
Yes, if Mr. Mayor, if Mr. Deputy Mayor is going to reach out, that's good enough. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Wolkie?
Looking forward to the 25th anniversary celebration. I, and I guess I hesitate to ask, but I'll ask the city manager. On social media, there was a number, and I was actually contacted. But there was the assertion made by individuals involved with Lakes Cross Country that the city was involved in canceling the, the Fort Stilicon invite. And specifically, they were told by a, a school. And specifically, they were told by a, a school employee um, that, in, in what I read, they actually named the person and said that she told them, the city said, "The park's gonna be dangerous," and they can't be on there. I'm paraphrasing that part. So what was the city's role in the cancellation of the Fort Stillicham invite? What contact did we have with the school district that led them to this decision?
Councilmember Wolkie, I'm not aware of any contact that my staff had with the school district on this, um, other than I talked to the school superintendent on Wednesday when I saw him at an event and told him that, you know, because he was all excited. Actually, he was sad that he wasn't able to come to the twenty-fifth anniversary because he was gonna be out of town. And when I told him that just a few minutes earlier, we had decided to postpone it because of the weather, he said, "Oh, that's great, because now we'll be able to attend, because I'll be in town on the twenty-fifth." So that was the extent of, as far as I know, the conversation that anybody had with the staff, because I didn't give any authority that I'm aware of to close the parks or, like, we didn't close the parks or anything. I did get a call from Ms. Dawsworth this weekend, or Friday night or Saturday, that some folks were saying what you just said there. And, uh, you know, her response was, you know, "We didn't make any statement that we're closing the parks or anything." That, um, the school district made this decision on their own. So between myself and Ms. Dawsworth, we're not aware of.
Well, there was some reference to a Thursday morning meeting. Again, this is social media, so I don't, I, you know, it's, okay. I don't know how far to go with this, but, because they made accusations about this employee, the school district employee, that supposedly said the city was in this meeting and so you're saying we didn't.
I'm not aware, I, I'm not saying that that didn't happen, but I'm not aware of any involvement by the city in the cancellation of a school district event, just like the school district was not involved in the decision of the city to postpone the twenty-fifth anniversary.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there are some even wilder speculation than that, that I heard today. Mr. Brestair?
Yep, th- thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a couple of comments about, uh, the, the mural that was done by Lower Park High School students, um, and that was, was unveiled and will now be publicly unveiled, I guess, on Saturday to be able to go and do that. And that there's two versions of it, one that is portable and one that is permanently affixed in the, in the high school. But it's, uh, uh, you know, and I'm not someone that tells how great it is as a piece of art, but as, um, something that is communicating inclusiveness within our community. It's moves beyond that statistical realm of inclusiveness and diversity to being a visual depiction of diverse groups of people interacting with each other. Uh, and the title of the, of the mural is, you know, "The World Lives in Lakewood." Um, so it's, um, uh, something that is, that is a positive comment on that theme, um, where sometimes we, we get less than positive comments of it. And so, um, those students have done the city a great service. This past Thursday, I had the opportunity to go down to the City-City Building for the dedication of the First Responders Memorial, uh, for Pierce County. And, um, it is a, uh, a ver- a very well-done, tasteful memorial. It, of course, includes the names of the four Lakewood police officers that, that were lost, along with all of the law enforcement officers and firefighters, uh, who have lost their lives in the line of duty going back to eighteen ninety-one in Pierce County. Um, and as well as, in keeping with the theme of this being a community that is supportive of JBLM, uh, of all the, the military police that lost their lives in, uh, Iraq or Afghanistan, uh, or, or actually on JBLM, um, during the, the, the past twenty years. So it's a, uh, uh, well worth a visit to, um, go and see. It's well worth a, um, a, as a, as a destination to maybe take young people to see. Um, and, uh, I think that we could do that. And, uh, the, the chief and I, who had an opportunity to be there representing Lakewood, um, was there. Uh, the Tide Flats Advisory Group that I'm sitting on, that is working on a sub-area plan for the fort, essentially, uh, to be able to go through that, that's, uh, a, a project that's entering its third year, uh, has moved on to the point of where they're going to do a full EIS. Um, and that that's the, sort of, the next five months' worth of, uh, uh, of effort, essentially leading to, as our sub-area plans have, uh, planned action ordinance, uh, that will do that. Separate to that action is the Tacoma City Council looking at moving from, from interim regulations to some permanent land regulations in the, in, in the fort and the tide flats, which is maybe a little more of a concern to make sure that primarily to look at big environmental picture and also the impact on JBLM remaining a viable forest protection platform. But, uh, that process in the view, it looks like it has another eighteen months to run before there's something actually in front of the Tacoma City Council in terms of a sub-area plan. As we're, we're, they're, they're working through the, the EIS, and there's lots of players with points of view submitting thing. The Sound Transit presentation that we received today, a mini presentation of that sort, uh, to, to show the scope of their public outreach, uh, they did at the Springbrook Connections Meeting this past week. Um, were there and gave a shorter presentation than we received that was just focused on the parts of those projects that they have within Springbrook. That was actually well-received, and there were some, some good input from Springbrook residents in that, like, on Forty-seventh Avenue, they would really prefer for the bridge to have one wide sidewalk rather than two narrow sidewalks on each side. Um, and, uh, a wider sidewalk, uh, on, 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 on just, uh, west side of, of Forty-seventh Avenue going down. And they, uh, they liked the McCord Drive, Lincoln Avenue sidewalks along all the bus routes, uh, piece there. But I thought it was really good, the fact that Sound Transit is reaching out to groups at that level in the community to, to, to gather input. And then, uh, this, uh, this Thursday, I'm gonna attend the Master Builders Association Housing Summit in Kualap. See what their crystal ball said.
That it? Ms. Farmer?
On Wednesday, I attended the Community Services Advisory Board meeting, where they did discuss their one percent ARPA allocation based on, um, their current contracting process and, and who they've got on contract and that sort of thing. So you'll learn a lot more at our joint, at the joint meeting next week. On Thursday, I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council meeting, excuse me, Pierce County Regional Council meeting. And we continued our very thorough conversation about the countywide growth policies. Um, that is winding its, winding its way through. I, I do have two things I would, I would like to discuss. Um, I noticed that in our Council Rules of Procedure, Section three point five, when it comes to public comment, um, that it's not updated to handle hybrid format. And so the rules of procedure are written for an in-person commenting situation, which is fairly translatable to an all-online situation. But it, it really doesn't address the, the uniqueness of a hybrid format. And so I would like to suggest that we have, uh, staff queue up some tweaks. It doesn't need a complete rewrite, but a, but some tweaks to, to handle today's environment.
Hey, I discussed that with the city manager. I think some, I, I would call them temporary or interim regulations or rules would be appropriate. The governor has mandated what we do, but we don't kind of overrode our rules, so have to adapt to his. But his are gonna go away at some point, so.
Yeah, I, I support keeping a hybrid, uh, modality. I think we, we can get a lot more, um, folks coming.
I, I don't mind the hybrid modality, but it doesn't appear that under the current emergency regulation, we can limit out-of-state, out-of-area people. And, uh, my only concern is, you get an advocacy group, they go and get their friends in Colorado, and they take up whatever time we have, whether we limit that or not. And the people who live here and want to communicate with their council are excluded. So, um, you know, we have one regular out-of-state person now, but we've also had a couple of others in the last couple of weeks, regulars from Seattle and people who live other places. So, um, how we can get a balance on that is, is a little concern I have. I, otherwise, great to open it up.
I would love to continue the conversation. I, I do also want to point out that I feel, um, I've been very dismayed by the personal attacks. And, and our council rules of procedure actually stipulate that that the public is supposed to address us as a group and not, and not attack individuals. And so, and I hadn't noticed that before, and so I wanted to, to point that out.
Yeah, well, as the, as the lightning rod for that, I would note that I, I have a strong-felt, personal belief that people have the constitutional right to tell public officials that they're an idiot, whether or not they have any factual basis for it. So. But that's, that's my personal opinion. It may not be the letter of the law, it may not be, there might not be a way to, may or may not be a way to practically apply the rules as we have.
Right.
I always thought of it as the, uh, the right, the, going back to the pre-Constitution days, English rule, that one of the complaints that the, uh, colonists had was that they couldn't criticize the king. Said, "Well, you can go to a public place, you can yell at the kings and the king's an idiot," uh, without getting arrested, uh, because, partially because we don't have a king, but, uh, figuratively.
My, uh, my day job as a communications professional for the state agency charged with protecting free speech rights on the Capitol campus, I fully believe that anybody can come in and, and use their three minutes, um, to the, to the certain levels. And I was just curious if, if, if that is something that we wanted to keep in there or if we don't intend to enforce it. I don't know. It's just, it was just a bit of a disconnect, uh, for me. The other item I wanted to bring up was a conversation a couple of weeks ago about, um, the possibility of us returning to virtual meetings. And we've discussed it a little bit, but I was just curious how everybody's feeling.
See where it goes. Any other thoughts on that? I think we're gonna be, we, we will or we not, will not be mandated. My personal opinion is to stay as open as the state mandates allow. But, uh, you may have different opinions, so, oh, listen. As long as they're allowing unmasked Seahawks games, I think we should be able to have meetings.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, as long as they're having, uh, affect, effectively unmasked Seahawks games, I think. Where you're sitting next to a stranger drinking beer who isn't wearing a mask, you should be able to, with our area, have public meeting to keep government going. But that's, you may have a diff, you know, people may have a different opinion, all out of the will of council. But the, the default, uh, absent, uh, council preference, go otherwise, is to stay as open as the governor's regulations allow.
Thank you.
Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to compliment, uh, the staff and the community partners and the vendors on their flexibility to change the date because of the weather, um, from last weekend to this coming weekend. And I just look forward to that, and it sounds like it's going to be, um, a continued great event. So the, the nimbleness is, and the flexibility is just wonderful to see.
Mr. Wayland?
That was my only comment, too, is to thank staff for pivoting as well as they have for the, the weekend, the Saturday, the twenty-fifth. And I look forward to seeing you all there. That's it. A couple of things. Well, addressing what actually happened, I'll talk to the mayor. Uh, after a presentation was made on, uh, economic development, there was open questions. Uh, one member of the public, uh, went on, was, made a long statement regarding trees, which would be familiar to you if you've been in any of our meetings. Not in the form of, not in the form of a question. Uh, and, uh, I indicated that, you know, the city council was kind of in a tough position because we had to balance Growth Management Act requirements and the likelihood that we had to plan for eighty thousand people and all that goes with that. Um, and balance that against trying to preserve the environment of Lakewood. And it's tough. Uh, I also offered that I was a big fan, not that you had to buy trees. Was a big fan of conservation, uh, organizations, uh, conserv- land conservancies in particular, which I have supported both with money, uh, time, and professionally, uh, in facilitating some of their transactions. Uh, in that, uh, private nonprofit money is used to, now a lot of government money, is used to, to, to obtain development rights and preserve, uh, property. And, uh, that seemed to offend her, that even, it should even be suggested that you couldn't just take something from somebody if she wanted it. Whether it's the right to cut down a tree or the tree itself, or conceivably the property. So I will go to my grave, uh, didn't argue about it. I, I thought it was a constructive suggestion that land conservancies might be brought into the urban environment because they're looking, you know, in Seattle, they've run out of trees to buy, you know, as far as forest land. So they're looking at urban housing projects and the like, so maybe this is another way to get them in. And it's been very successful. Most of the Nisqually watershed is in conservation, uh, ownership now. Virtually all of it, um, vast majority. And Flood Plains by design has bought hundreds of acres in the Gill Valley, uh, under that program, uh, where in most cases, landlords continue to own the property, but the reuse is restricted or houses are removed, right, so. You know, with private, kind of a, the economics work, uh, if you work at it hard enough. And as we know, we can't have red control in the state of Washington. It's Seattle's efforts at red control have been knocked down by the city, uh, the State Supreme Court twice. I heard today from an engineering firm that, this is an aside, that they were preparing to try to, uh, obtain work on the Western State Hospital project because DSHS had selected an architect. I don't know if that's general knowledge, but evidently they're moving forward with plans on that.
plans on that. The, I have, I have been invited to apply, which I did, to be on the board of the Association of Defense Communities, which represents 300 military communities. See how that goes. And thanks to Mr. Caulfield and Ms. Dodsworth, this is the second Saturday in a row I'm going to have to sell my Oregon football tickets. So any assertion that the 18th was my idea, or the 25th was my idea, is obviously goes against every fiber of my football fan being, so. So, Mr. Caulfield, you stated, indicated there was not an urgent need for an executive session, but the ability, what if we weren't too late?
I do want to say, though, Mayor, you know, it's not like it's Notre Dame, okay? It's just Oregon, so just saying.
Rated number three in the pack.
But yeah, yes, Mayor, it's nothing urgent, you know, and, you know, if we have more time next week, we can do it next week.
Oh, wait, anything further to come before the council, then? Then we're adjourned.